So, good evening everyone and welcome to the meeting of December twenty eighth. Just give me one second. There's a statement I want to just read to open us with. Actually, let's start with the roll call. So, Norma Drummond, Chair of the Zoning Board.
Aziz Assam.
Thank you. Rocco?
Rocco Limatone.
Good, thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, good evening and welcome to the East Fiscal Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of December twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Due to the public health and safety concerns associated with the COVID nineteen pandemic, the board is meeting via video conference using the Zoom platform in accordance with the Governor's Executive Orders. There is no in-person public participation tonight, rather the public can watch the live meeting through Zoom, online and on cable. Notice of tonight's meeting was published as required and posted on the town website. The web notice included instructions for members of the public to access the meeting and participate in public hearings. For each of the public hearing applications on the agenda this evening, public comments will be taken at the appropriate time after the board has asked any of its own questions. Please note that tonight's meeting is being recorded and a transcript will be available at a later date. We start our meeting with some administrative issues, then we'll issue, well, actually, we don't have decisions this evening. And then we will hold, most of, actually, most of our meeting is public hearings this evening, which will be on applications. This is, this board has already reviewed and now wants to hear from the neighbors about as we recognize that you know these areas better than we do. So, I will introduce each agenda item so everyone will know which one we're working on. And, and so neighbors, at that time, we will recognize you and you'll have the ability to offer any comments. If you wish to comment on an application that has a public hearing, when we get to that item on the agenda and I ask for public comment, please do the following depending upon whether you are on the phone or online. Members of the public attending online via the Zoom app may use the raise hand feature at the appropriate time if you would like to make a comment. The feature is located at the bottom of the screen. Those attending via telephone can press star nine. The meeting host will see that your hand is raised and that you have pressed star nine and will unmute those waiting one at a time so that you can speak. In either case, please state your name when you are called upon to speak. In order to keep the meeting orderly and ensure we have a clear recording, please follow these ground rules. One, when you are given access to speak, please state your name and address. It's helpful for the board members to know if you are a neighbor to an application. Two board members, I will call on you one at a time to speak and avoid everyone speaking at once. If you wish to speak at any time when I'm not calling on you, you may also use the raise hand function or literally raise your hand on the screen and I'll see you and we'll call on you. I do also ask the board members to please mute yourselves. When you are not speaking, I'll do the same. This is especially important if you are not the only one home in your house where you have animals who might bark. We certainly had that issue. If we don't have to, we won't use the roll call for our, for our official actions. We will use a roll call vote for the purposes of board motions. So, thank you for your patience, everyone, as we work through this and conduct the meeting in this manner. All right, so. Hold on, because I have so many documents open at one time. So, let me get to the agenda. So, our next meetings will be Tuesday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, and Tuesday, February twenty second, twenty twenty one. We do have one set of minutes to approve.
Twenty twenty-two.
Sorry, twenty, oh, Jackie. Yes, thank you, Aziz. Okay. But there is one set of minutes from our meeting of November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So, move with amendments, as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, good. So, I am not sure how we will be conducting our February meeting. Honestly, there were no new applications this month or none that were ready for the board's review at this point. So, if the virus still continues to not be good and the governor extends the executive order, we may very well ask to do this meeting by Zoom again. I think just for the winter months, especially with the risk of snow out there, it's just, we don't have to worry about, we don't have to worry about weather if we do it by Zoom. So, for the time being, I'm just going to ask for flexibility. Just, you know, we will not have any public hearings for next month regardless, just unless one of tonight's public hearings gets, does not get closed for some reason. So, so with that being said, you know, normally I would say this no policy. If there is snow and we are expecting to do this in person, the meeting would get, if town hall is closed, then our meeting is canceled. It is not postponed. It is canceled. And if you are scheduled for a public hearing for next month, because you're, for whatever reason, your application this evening did not close, then we just ask that you correct your sign, update it with the new date for the January meeting. But, so the first items of business are our public hearings. Again, these are issues or in applications where the board has already had an opportunity to review them. So, now it will be important for us to hear from any neighbors who might have any concerns. So, with that said, I'm going to go right into item number one, which is Appeal four zero one eight, Peter Lamparello. Thirty-eight Hidden Acres Road, Stormville, requesting a variance to allow an existing ten-foot by twenty-foot or two-hundred-square-foot barn and an existing generator to be located in the front yard pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So, moved.
Rocco, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so, hold on. Let me get back to the other screen. So, Mr. Lamparello, if you can raise your hand.
If you're here, I may have the applicant, you can, okay.
All right, this way we just know who, that you are available and if any questions arise. So, there is an existing barn on the property that was previously used for animals and is not being used as such at this point, but, well, you know, but essentially it's been there already. It's not, it's, this is not something you wish to put up. It was, it is there already. And the generator, you know, in accordance with the conversation that we had with you last month when we were asking about it, it's, it's essentially already located in an area that it makes the most sense in terms of connecting with your electric, et cetera, for your house. If I remember correctly, both the generator and the barn are screened. I think you said only people could only see the top of the barn. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, right.
Okay, good. Thank you. I was trying to remember what we, what we covered last month. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
I have no questions.
Thank you. So, sorry, I got to go back to the one screen. So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Peter Lamparello, thirty-eight Hidden Acres Road, Stormville, requesting a variance to allow an existing ten-foot by twenty-foot or two-hundred-square-foot barn and an existing generator both to be located in the front yard?
If you're here to speak, please hit the raise your hand function, or if you dial then, please hit star nine. I see no hands raised.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So, moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Good, thank you. There is a resolution?
Rocco, you want to go?
Sure. Appeal number four zero one eight, applicant is Peter Lamparello. Request for variances from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven and the schedule of bulk regulations of the town code to allow an existing ten-foot by twenty-foot, total two-hundred-square-foot barn and generator to be located in the front yard. The location address is thirty-eight Hidden Acres Road in Stormville. Resolution offered by zoning board member Rocco Limatone. Whereas the barn was installed in nineteen ninety-seven and whereas the barn on the site was previously used for animals, but is now only used for storage and whereas the barn does not impede on a neighbor's ability to enjoy their properties and whereas the generator would only be used for emergencies when the power is out in the street and whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on December twenty-eighth of twenty-one and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property. The variances are not substantial. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Peter Lamparello for variances from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven and the schedule of bulk regulations of the town code to allow an existing ten-foot by twenty-foot total of two-hundred-square-foot, square feet barn and generator to be located in the front yard. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member in the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, votes as follows. Aziz Assam?
Aye.
And Rocco Limatone?
Aye.
Good. And myself, aye. So, the motion carries. Mr. and Mrs. Lamparello, you guys are all set. You just deal with the building department at this point.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Have a good evening. All right, item number two, Appeal four zero two zero, Michael Gillespie, seventy-five Francis Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit to allow a professional office in a residential district pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So, moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So, Michael, good evening. We did have an application, you know, we have an opportunity to review your application last month. We all know you have an office on three seventy-six and three fiscal planes, but given the circumstances of the pandemic and just other circumstances, you're wishing to use part of your home to be able to do some of your professional work. It is allowed by code with the approval of the zoning board. You mentioned that there is a separate entrance on the side that anybody who wishes to, who would be meeting with you at that location would be, wouldn't have to go through your home to be able to get in. There is a separate, then you have adequate parking. You're at the end, essentially at the end of the street there, the end of the cul-de-sac there. So, you know, you wouldn't be impactful of any of your neighbors. You said you did not expect to put a sign up. And you did not expect at this point to have employees, even though the code does allow you to have an employee. So, at some point, if you needed to, you could actually have a, a single employee there. But again, it would not, based on the representations that you made at last month's meeting, it would not be impactful to your neighbors. Is there anything else that you wish to offer or, at this point, Michael?
No, I think you kind of hit all the high points.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Michael Gillespie, seventy-five Francis Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit to allow a professional office in a residential district?
We have one speaker. I'm going to promote Ms. Jennifer Simmons.
Okay. Ms. Simmons, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I live on seventy-two Francis, so I just have a couple, a couple of questions. I know where Mike's office is on three seventy-six and there's several vehicles there every day. So, my question is, is there going to be parking? He's got a long driveway and into the house. I'm very familiar with it. And his house is set back, but my question still is the traffic flow that's going down for any of the surveyor trucks or anything like that. So, my question is, is it limited to just him and like one person? Because we do live on a cul-de-sac and my concern is the increased traffic flow. I purposely moved to a cul-de-sac so there wasn't anything. And currently now, we have the childcare that's on, before you get to the cul-de-sac and those people come flying through and around and we have three different sets of buses between Arlington and Wappingers that come through. And my concern is, any of the surveyor trucks or the vans or the employees or the clients are now coming in and parking in the cul-de-sac. So, is he creating additional parking in his residence for all of those vehicles? Because I do not want them parking in the cul-de-sac because of where my house is.
So, thank you. That's a very reasonable concern. My, Michael, we did go through some of this last month. So, if you can just respond to Ms. Simmons, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, hey, Jen, I, what happens, I don't, I don't plan on actually relocating from my office, you know, anytime in the near future. I wanted to kind of set this up so at least I had this in case, you know, at some point, even in the winter and I stay home from snow and somebody decides to come in and need to pick something up in the future. I don't plan on having anybody else but me. This is kind of a, a pre-retirement maybe kind of a thing. So, it's not going to be to any scale that I have over at my, my office there. I, it was mentioned at the last meeting too in terms of the van. I don't, I don't even think I'll, I won't need the van down the road. It's just because I have, you know, another employees here, there at the office now. But this is, this is going to be much less than anything that I have going on right now. And certainly no plans to park in the, in the cul-de-sac. As you know, we have a few kids. Most of them are out of the house by now. Hopefully, we have another one gone. So, that'll, we have a few parking spots up by the garage, which, which should be plenty.
So, Michael, your, your point would be that anybody who comes to your, your business at your home would know that they should be parking in the driveway and not on the street?
Correct. Yeah, it's a pretty long walk from the edge of the street. So, I would suspect that they would, they would want to work their way up to the end anyway.
Okay. Jennifer, anything else?
Is there, I know, I know Mike doesn't plan on making this his full thing, but if for some reason it does, because I know you're trying to do the development over there as well and you may shift it, is there a limit to the number of parking spaces or things that they have? I mean, I understand he's saying that it won't, but there's nothing that stops it in the future if it grows. So, what is the assurance from us that that's not going to happen?
So, the town code actually allows one professional vehicle and it's, there is a limit in the town code but they, of what size that vehicle is allowed to be. And he is also allowed one employee based on the town code. So, anything more than that, and you certainly have the right to call the building department and file a complaint that he is in violation of what the town code allows.
So, Mike, the intent is not to relocate your entire three seventy-six to there?
No, I couldn't do that. This just doesn't have, I don't have the facilities at home to do that. So, again, this is, this is a bit of ways off, so.
And when, when do you think you're going to start operating out of that?
I don't know. You know, I'm thinking probably within the next seven to eight years along those lines. Again, I don't plan, just to be very clear, at least for a lot of reasons, I don't plan, you know, at least for the next five to six, seven years of going anywhere out of that office only because, you know, everybody's got a plan. That's mine, so.
Simmons, any other questions?
Is it, I think my last question is, is there specific hours of operation?
I think that would, you know.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I would say that would be standard. I mean, right now, we work from eight to four-thirty. I don't see, you know, possibly it could be nine to five. But I would say within standard operating hours, you know.
I mean, Michael, I could see it happening that you could, there's a client that works during the day and might want to stop in in the early evening, but I don't, can't imagine you go later than like eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night.
Yeah, and that's, at least even now, that's kind of a rarity, you know.
Right, right. Ms. Simmons, any other questions?
No, thank you.
No, you're welcome. No problem. Thank you for joining us. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak related to the appeal from Mr. Gillespie?
There's a caller.
So, the caller, if you can state your name and address, it would be appreciated to start. Thank you. We're still muted, so.
If you hit star six, it may unmute you.
So, the caller, we're not, we're still seeing that you're muted if you're trying to speak. Perhaps put in the, oh. All right, we, Ms. Simmons says is no longer a palace, so we're still trying to see if the caller can unmute themselves to speak. All right, the caller, I'm going to ask if you can put your comments or question in the chat perhaps and we'll see if we can respond to that way.
I believe the caller is on the telephone, so they have to unmute the telephone.
Yeah, they have to, yeah, they can't do it in the chat. Shoot, thank you, Aziz.
Michael, you want to give him instructions again?
You can, you can try to hit star six. That should work. Star six is the function. So, if there's any, I don't know, I don't know what else to do at this point.
Yeah, at this point, it's. Michael, is there any chance you recognize this phone number as one of your neighbors?
Oh, let me check. It looks like the person hung up.
Yeah, that looks like the person hung up. Let's give them, just give them a minute just in case they do sign back on.
Yeah, I'm, I don't, I can't see the numbers that pop up.
Just give us one more minute.
Yep.
Decided to join us, huh?
I, I thought I was there, but I, I wasn't.
That's all right, you know.
Sorry.
I don't, I don't see the caller.
Yeah, I don't either. Okay, so, what's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And then there's a resolution?
This is Appeal number four zero two zero. Applicant is Michael Gillespie, requesting a special permit pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety of the town code to allow a professional office in a residential district. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assam. Whereas applicant is requesting a special permit for a professional office to provide himself with more flexible, flexibility to work from home and where the property is located at the end of a street and would not be a traffic generator and whereas the applicant does not intend to install a sign at the property advertising his business and whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one and whereas the applic, application meets the requirements of section one ninety-four dash ninety of the town code. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Michael Gillespie for a special permit for a professional office pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety of the town code. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed by the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, Michael, your, your motion carries. You're all set.
Okay, great, thanks. Happy New Year.
To you as well. All right, have a good night.
You too.
Happy New Year too.
All right, and our last item of the agenda, Appeal four zero two one, Robert Clark. Four zero five Holmes Road, Holmes is requesting an eleven-foot sideline variance for an existing generator pursuant to section one ninety-four, attachment three of the zoning ordinance. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, Mr. Clark, if you can raise your hand or Mrs. Clark, actually, I think you were both there last time. Okay, so we, I see that you're on. So, when we talked last month, we did have an opportunity, sorry, to review your application last month. What we talked about was the fact that you have a lot of boulders, rock boulders in your yard. And so, this is really the best location for the generator to go. It's where the electric is for your house, but it really, and you know, you also have some, the woods that separate you from the house next to you. But the fact that you have, you know, such a, so many large boulders in your yard, it makes it difficult for you to find any other placement for this generator. So, is there anything else you wish to add regarding this? You have to unmute yourself. All right, well, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good. And again, you've pointed out that it's a very rocky terrain, so the location is the best for the applicant.
We do have a caller that raises her hand. I'm not sure if that's Ms. Clark. So, if, if you'd like to speak, please hit star six.
Yes, this is Mrs. Clark. That is correct.
Okay, so, is there anyone here who else here who wishes to speak for or against this application? I'm not sure who Matt is. Matt, if you're here for this application, if you could raise your hand, we'll unmute you. Okay, so seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Going to go?
Oh, yep. Appeal number four zero two one, applicant is Robert Clark. Request for an eleven-foot sideline variance from the requirements of the schedule bulk regulations of the town code for a generator located at four oh five Holmes Road in Holmes. Resolution offered by zoning board member Rocco Limatone. Whereas the generator would be for the emergency purposes only and where screening is already in place for the generator and whereas the proposed location is the only workable location due to the presence of large rocks in the property. And whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on December twenty-second of twenty-one and whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA and whereas the le, I'm sorry, repeating myself, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one and whereas the zoning boards, board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property. The variance is not substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Robert Clark for an eleven foot sideline variance from the requirements of the scheduled bulk regulations of the town code for a generator. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so the motion carries. Mister and Mrs. Clark, you guys are all set. You just deal with the building department at this point for your permit for the generator.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a good evening. All right, so that concludes all the business that we have this evening, are for our agenda, I wanted to take an opportunity to say happy new year to all of you guys, and thank you again for your service this year. I'm looking forward to another year. All right, so everybody stay safe, and we'll see you in twenty twenty two.
Happy new year.
Everybody.
Motion.
Hi, everyone, motion to adjourn, thank you, second, all in favor? You're done.